You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the July 13th, 2022 meeting of the Michigan City Police Civil Service Commission Special Meeting. You can find more information on this meeting by visiting www.xslaporte county.org.
So I'm calling to order a special meeting of the Michigan City Police Civil Service Commission. Myself and Commissioner Cross are here, so we have a forum. We'll skip any other formalities. And also present is Chief of Operations Marty Corley. The purpose of the meeting today is to discuss some changes to the contract wherein some verbiage was added regarding what are considered to be lateral transfers. And that would be current police officers that are in perf and employed at another police agency that would like to come to our agency and work. So we're here to discuss some changes that need to be made to our rules and regulations with regards to hiring procedures for that and with regards to probationary status for those officers. So do you have any suggestions from the administration as far as what you would like to see?
Oh, just looking at, just trying to expedite the process. I spoke to some other agencies and I know that they, you know, they don't make their laterals go through the same process as new officers. And again, you know, as far as the written test, that is, no, they don't really usually do that, but they do do a physical fitness, of course. And then basically between the physical fitness and, you know, that's different in perf. During perf, physical fitness and then make like a background, extensive background check. But, you know, outside of that, they make it streamlined to make the process go a little fast because a lot of times, you know, and looking at the laterals, trying to get those into something in your manpower. And then as far as probationary period, I know a lot of departments and I've talked to, I've talked to at least one chief that is probably one of our competitors. They after probationary, not probationary, but the FTO, if they can go through FTO and after FTO, then they are moved up to probation. And then, you know, and then FTO, it could be something that's also, because sometimes you might get a person here instead of the four months FTO, they might be ready after a month, but just put the language into that after FTO, after they complete the FTO process to bring them up to.
So I will tell you with our discussions, so right now, we presented a few changes that we personally wanted to see to Mr. Waters and our attorney. And he's in currently in the process of wording that correctly so it can be placed into our rules and regulations. And then he is also in the process of doing some investigation as to whether the changes that we make to our rules and regulations have to be presented as an ordinance to the city council and added.
Okay.
Right now, it doesn't look like it because nothing is going to affect any monies. But one thing we discussed and we felt like as far as probation goes, the way it's worded in here now, we're going to change some language as far as what's in there for all probationary officers, first of all, because it says up to one year. There's no reason for that to say up to one year. It should just say one year because it's always just been one year. So it's going to be changed from up to one year to probationary status for new hires is one year. There'll be a separate section though, that's specific to lateral transfers and that will say up to six months. And there'll be some verbiage in there as far as, they'll be on probation for up to six months unless we're presented with a request from the administration to change them from probationary status to first class patrol officer.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. That way we still have that six month period for review, but if you feel like somebody should be off of probation on their own, no restrictions, after three, four, or five months, all we need is a letter, we'll review it. And nine times out of 10, we're gonna.
Right. So it's going to say up to six months, correct Bruce?
Yeah. And then we're going to change it from, for the regular that's in there now, it says up to one year. We're just gonna make it.
Well, so with the laterals are, because I know some departments treat the laterals as e-hires or emergency hires. And so, I mean, I know we have a physical fitness that we do for new applicants, but should we streamline our physical fitness for laterals to do something that is easier process for us to go through, so it has to be a drawn out, you know, deal, like our top level for our physical fitness?
So interesting enough, Greg Jesse sent me a, well, you know Greg Jesse email. So he sent me an email a day before yesterday, I think, or yesterday, I think it was yesterday. Regardless, he was talking about e-hire situations where some agencies say if we get below, you know, X amount of our allotment, then, and I explained to him that since we've been on this commission, we've never had a hiring list. We've never had people really just waiting in the wings and saying, okay, you're next, you're next. We haven't had the luxury of that because it's been the COVID thing and we've had mass exits from here. And so we haven't been able to catch up, obviously. We're doing our best, but so we had discussed streamlining it and they are not going to take the written examination like anybody else. So if we had a new, we had somebody here that applies from South Bend, say, after we get all this done, what we'd like to do is that we would obviously do an interview process with them. And then if we agree they should move forward, then it would be passed on to you guys for the background. To streamline it, like I explained to Greg, to streamline it, right now, one of our biggest challenges is getting these background investigations back in a timely manner. So that's going to be a huge part on your side.
Yeah.
If you want to expedite things.
Right.
Which we have no problem with and we agree there should be an abbreviated background Let me back up a little bit. I know what you're talking about and I talked with Willie Henderson downstairs earlier and he was talking about depending on their, you know, how much.
Separation.
Separation from, so we're going to consider a lateral transfer personally for us, a lateral transfer is somebody currently enrolled in perf, somebody currently employed with another agency. Okay. And who is not the subject or focus of any criminal or internal investigation at the time they apply.
Good.
And who's in good standings with their department. Okay. And then I think from that point, it would be up to you guys to decide on how much of abbreviated background investigation should be done.
Right.
You know, I don't see really the, the regular applicants go through a pretty rigorous background investigation. I don't see a big need for that, a bunch of interviews, because honestly, I've done them before as well as you. You know that scheduling interviews, trying to find people to talk with, that's what takes time.
Right.
I don't see the need for that. I do think that since we're foregoing the written portion of it, even though we don't, even though grammar is not a big portion of that, we still would like to see or review some case reports that those officers have written.
Yeah.
So maybe that would be something that we could include in the background or even in an interview process, just to see how well they read and write, you know, and understand the English language. But again, we're looking at just an abbreviated background investigation and as long as they're within, as long as they pass that and they pass the physical fitness, and we're just thinking as far as physical fitness, there's two options. One could be give them the physical fitness that your, this agency does for someone there in their age group and pass that, or just give them the one that all applicants are required to take.
Yeah, I mean, I, again, to make it, I guess streamlined and, you know, a little bit expedited would do what our, because it's easier to set up what we do, our top, what we do for our top physical fitness.
Right.
It's the mile, either you run a mile in so many minutes, you're in your age, or do a mile and a half or two mile bike ride, I think it is. I ran a mile once in my whole time, but I've done a bike most of the time. And then, you know, when we do sit-ups and either bench press or push-ups, I mean, that's easier to set up than what the academy standards is because they don't have to go to the academy.
Right.
So, you know, that part is to make sure that people can pass to the academy for new applicants.
Right.
They won't have to do that.
But the new applicants, their physical fitness testing is pretty simple.
Yeah, it is.
I mean, they could literally do that in a half an hour's time, you know? But so that could be something we can discuss. They would have to pass at least that, so the physical fitness, the background investigation and an interview. And as long as they're within good standings and meet the definition of what lateral transfer is, I don't know what your feeling is about separation or anything. And I don't know if they've been separated from the agency they used to be employed at for six months, if there's something that has to be done through perf to get them back in. I don't know if they're unenrolled after a certain amount of time.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that. I mean, I think there should be some wiggle room in that too, because it could be a special case for somebody, yeah, they might have been separated, but say for instance, they moved from another state.
Right. Or if they're from one agency and the other agency they applied at said, yeah, we're gonna hire you and this is gonna be your hire date and they just walk in and say, hey, I'm done, I'm going, I'm taking six weeks off because I'm gonna go to Michigan City and I want time off, I can afford to do it. So they would be separated for a period of that. But at the time, the wording that we were talking about is, is they have to be a current, currently employed as a full-time police officer, already academy certified, already completed the law enforcement academy and enrolled in perf. That's right. I don't, yeah.
I don't, I think Chuck was also gonna, either Chuck or we're gonna have somebody from Division of Professional Standards check with the academy as far as, you know, for example, they've been out of law enforcement for three months, how long are they still certified for? Would they have to go through a refresher course? Now, I don't, I don't know, because you know what I mean? For example, let's say your nephew, if he was certified in Nebraska, you know, I don't think it's, I think it's a recertification and you don't even have to go, you just have to go through training here, I think, to bring your certification back up to snuff.
Yeah.
I think that's.
If you come from another state, I know you have to probably do a test.
Yeah, I think you have to do the law test.
Yeah, I don't think there's any like reciprocity like there is for other licenses.
So would somebody from out of state, how would you process, would that be a little bit different? Because again, they won't be academy certified here and they won't, well, they won't be in perf, because we're talking about somebody who's enrolled in perf.
Okay.
Right. So how, you know?
So, I mean, if, we had talked about, you're right, the perf thing.
Because we're talking about, most of somebody's enrolled in perf, so like somebody from another state, they're not enrolled in perf. So then they would, they would have to go through the whole process with the perf thing. I mean, I guess.
Yeah.
You can still eliminate some of the steps.
Yeah.
But then just perf would be the, that thing that they would have to go through or see how perf would do then, would they have to do with perf?
Yeah, I think, I've talked to.
Something we need to look into as far as what the state of Indiana, because I don't know what they accept, if there's certain, if there's certain states that they accept over others or what, you know? Where they might accept Kansas, but they don't accept Wyoming, or, you know?
Right.
So we'd have to look at, we'll have to look into that.
Yeah. I know it's required, a state statute, I think we know, they have to do some type of physical activity before they can, you know, transfer over. And that was my only concern, I think you're probably right, Chief, as far as level three testing that we have here.
Yeah.
If they can go through that, then we know that basically they're in pretty, they're decent shape.
They can do what they can do to job.
They don't have a bad back and now they're gonna, you know, put in for disability a year after they're here. That's, I think, our only concern.
If you want to give them their testing for what their age group would be here, I think that's, that's more than fair, instead of having to set up, you know, like you said, that we do for regular applicants.
So are you guys gonna ask the perf questions then, or do you think you need to do that?
I, would Havon be the one to best ask that?
I see.
Maybe mention it to him at the pension board meeting Friday?
Yeah, Kenny would be there Friday. Or actually, I'll see him tomorrow too, and then I'll talk to him tomorrow and/or Friday and see if he could check for us.
Personally, I think those are questions that should be asked and by, by the local pension board.
Kenny may already have the answer.
Yeah.
Because he's got, obviously he's got contacts down there he can find out right away. Is a three to six months good for you, Chief, as far as when a lateral transfer comes in as far as probationary time?
The up to six month wording.
Yeah. Like you say, with a letter we give, if they.
Right, right. At any point in time, from the day to hire to the, up to that six months, if the administration presents us with a request to take an officer from probationary status to first class patrol officer, you can do it by request and then we can do that.
Yeah.
That way, you know, we don't have a set amount of time, other than the six month limit, we don't have a set amount of time that says, oh, they're gonna be off in three months or whatever. I think that wording just covers anything that could arise, you know?
Because obviously the Division of Professional Standards and you and their supervisor would know when they're ready to come off probation a lot better than we would.
Yeah.
Whatever your recommendation is.
Yeah, I really advise to Chief Campbell also make sure he's gonna do it, but.
Yeah, well, absolutely. The, with that too, I think we, we, maybe a little, maybe this is a little off course, but once we, I think we all get this settled down, Marty, and written and passed and the rules changed and everything else, I really think now that that, the language for lateral transfers is in the contract, that we tend to need to start exploring, opening this place up to that.
Yeah.
Because I know the pay package is a little more appealing now. So I think we need to get together, the commission and the department, to start promoting, trying to get lateral transfers in here. And like you said, I wish Captain Jesse wasn't on vacation because he had some good ideas as far as the e-hires and stuff like that, and that would be great. It's just.
Yeah, he sent me an email and some of the things that he sent in there were some of the things I kind of talked about. I didn't use the exact same language, you know?
Yeah.
And I know that he talked about the 10%, you know, percentage of that.
Right, so if you're allocated for 80 officers and you're down eight, you could invoke that emergency hire where, you know? But again, that would be an expedited process and there's still things that they need to do.
Yeah.
And as I explained to Greg, the biggest part of the expedite process, obviously, for a lateral transfer is that background investigation. And we're not gonna forego that no matter what. So it's more of, and I explained to him, it's more of a department administration thing as far as how quickly we can get those background, because obviously, if we're in an emergency situation, we want to hire somebody fast, we still don't want to, even though it's gonna be an abbreviated background investigation, we still don't want to go through it so quickly that we miss something.
Right.
Because I think we've gotten some pretty good candidates here recently. We've had some good hires and I don't think we've had any issues with any of the hires so far, really, that we've had. And I know this next group is gonna be, what, probably eight that we're gonna be hiring. So that's, as you know, unusual. I think we sent, what, nine or 10 down?
Yeah, nine.
Nine. And eight that approved, that's, that's the best rates we've had so far.
We, yeah, our best.
Typically, we send eight or nine down, we get three.
This commission, for whatever reason.
Right.
It happens. It happens.
So, yeah, we would urge you probably before the next regular meeting in August, I think it's August 10th, to get with Chief Campbell and Chief Ashley and Sergeant Forker probably, and maybe even Lieutenant Urbansik, and probably, and discuss as far as the background with him, the kind of the process and the need to expedite that stuff. Because these lateral transfers, like Brock Moore, who really wasn't a lateral transfer because that verbiage wasn't in there.
Right.
But he was, I mean, he went from, from, I mean, higher date to, what, on his own in three months.
Yeah.
Roughly. Right, right. And, I mean, and that, so now, I think, what's our average, Bruce, from, from the time somebody applies and we do that first testing initially, I think I looked at that, from the first day of testing until those officers are actually out on their own, is about 18 months. Because it's taken us seven or eight months here, about eight months to get them from that time to hired, it's about eight months. And then, and then it's another 10 months from the time they start here to the time they're really out on their own.
Yeah.
Between the academy and the FTO program and things like that. So, yeah, it's 16 to 18 months before they're considered manpower, where somebody like Brock Moore was considered manpower in three months.
Right, yeah.
And with the mass exodus around here, that's, that's just, hopefully we won't run into that again, to that scale.
Yeah.
But after these eight, do you know where we're gonna be at?
If we hire eight, we are at 71 now, so we'll be at 79.
Okay. And then what retirement do we have coming up in the near future?
If we have any, it won't be until 2024. And I don't think nobody's really set anything. I know a couple people that were in perf took out, I think the next.
Charles.
Charles is the next one, he won't be until 2024, 2025.
Yeah, I think he's got three years left.
Then we'd be what, three down? What's your total complement though? What is the?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four. And we'd be at 79?
So we'd be at 79 if he's eight, so it would be five.
Five.
Yep. And hopefully.
So we do plan on doing, we talked and we do plan on doing some testing. This is a little off the subject, but we do plan on doing another round of testing here so we can get, get that done. Yeah, if you want to include him.
Thanks.
Him, this guy here? That guy. I was gonna call him, Dusty. But if you can include him as well in those discussions as far as the lateral transfers, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Just have everybody review the section as far as the hiring goes and if each, each person wants to give some suggestions on how they think things should be changed and that, that would be great.
So what do you guys plan on having your verbiage done?
So, like I said, Chuck is working on the verbiage that we presented to him, which is what you and I just, we all discussed here earlier. So he's working on how to word that. But if there's any changes that you guys would like to see, we at least want to get that to him before the next meeting.
Because I believe technically, according to what Chuck told us the last time we discussed this, we could do this all at one meeting.
So your response back to Captain Jesse, you out the verbiage and that email, you responded back to basically the verbiage you talked about, right?
Yeah, I got it at work and, and like I say, he sent me War and Peace and I was kind of just.
You cut it down to peace?
Evelyn Woods, speed reading, I did in third grade.
I mean, I got the justice what we talked about, what it is. So what I do is I get an email to everybody.
Yeah, as far as the verbiage goes, what I told you today was, we're, we're gonna change the, what it says now for regular officers, it says up to one year, is just going to say the probation period for a new hire is one year. And then there'll be a separate section, so you know, as far as lateral transfers will say up to six months. And the reason we're gonna do that is because there'll be a caveat in there that says unless it'll be up to, it'll be up to six months and there'll be something added that says if the administration provides a written request to have an officer, a lateral transfer officer move from probationary status to first class patrolman before six months, they need to present us with a letter requesting that.
Sounds good.
We figured three to six months, about right.
Right. And then there were some other changes or additions? Oh, well, to be considered a lateral transfer, at the time of application, you have to be currently employed as a law enforcement officer at the time of applying. You must be within good standings with your agency and not the focus of any internal or criminal investigations. Okay? And then we were talking about expediting the process for them, you know, in an emergency hire list or something like that. And, and like I said, our, our biggest hangup outside of perf, which we don't have to deal with with the lateral transfer, is.
Well, unless it's a county, if it's a sheriff's deputy, they still have to go to perf.
Right, right.
So even somebody from Long Beach or Dr. Cruz, yeah, state police.
Right. But if they're, if they're already enrolled in perf and have already completed the law enforcement academy here, as far as expediting, our, our biggest hangup then would be the internal investigation, the background investigation side of it. And so we need to do some, and that's going to be abbreviated. It'll be up to you guys how abbreviated that is, but since they're not gonna do a written test, we're gonna at least require something like them presenting us with some case reports that they've done so we can make sure that they're literate, you know? And then just doing the background stuff with the current agency they're employed with, making sure, and making sure they're not, like, don't have any civil cases against them right now and, you know, whatever it might be and things like that. Driver's license check, obviously, right? But then abbreviated, so we, we need to get those back quicker, you know, a couple weeks instead of a couple months.
Ultimately, they can be done from start to finish in a week or two.
Right, right.
As long as you're not getting, you know, three, four, or five of them.
Right.
But yeah, a quick interview with them and then, you know, moving on to their agency, that can literally take a week.
Right.
And have it back on your desk by the end of the second week.
Right. Because I think there's some wording in there, we also need to look at, Bruce, that's, we have to, when we create a list, we have to rank them.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think that that's probably maybe one of the reasons for an e-hire list is to forego that. So we're gonna have to look at that because obviously if we get a lateral transfer now and we're in between, we've exhausted all of our, all of our candidates with this last one. Nobody is eligible at this point in time to be considered, where they've all either been excluded or have to wait a year or whatever it is at this point. So if somebody walked in the door today, who was an officer from a surrounding agency, say, and wanted to start the process, we, if we have this verbiage changed, at that point, we could just start it right away, because we don't have to wait to do a testing procedure. And, and we could rank them because they'd be ranked one of one. They're number one, but they're the only ones, so.
Yeah.
And then we could just hire immediately that way.
Yeah. And we're looking at, you know, maybe a month of time of you guys contacting them saying, hey, we got your application, that's gonna be forwarded to either the chief's office or.
Right. Well, we would do, the first thing we would do, obviously, then, and that kind, that situation presented itself would be the interview. And then after we did the interview and we decide whether or not we were going to move that person forward, then it would automatically split the administration for background.
Sounds good.
And then after the background, well, after the interview, they would probably have to do like the physical fitness test. And what we're talking about is, is say they're 32, so whatever department standard is for a 32-year-old, they would have to pass that.
Top tier.
The top tier, whatever.
Sure.
Yeah. They would have to pass that and then they would move on to background.
I think that's there.
And then after the background, it would be hire.
Come up with a hire date.
Come up with a hire date and be done.
Yeah.
I think we still have to contact perf and just move their pension fund from that.
Right, but I think that would be, that's the local pension board would do that, so that would be something that.
Yeah. So the question would be is for the perf pensioners, what requirements would be needed for an officer from another agency locally? And then separation requirements and then also somebody from another state.
Right.
Yeah, because I don't know what the, the requirements are for an equivalent academy. I don't know what.
Yeah, we didn't know, we didn't know if Indiana had any reciprocity with any other states as far as like, if they would accept academy from Michigan.
Yes, they, they do, as long as, like, we would have to get ahold of their curriculum and send that to the law enforcement training board and say, would this academy suffice to be covered under Indiana?
Well, they have to have some kind of rules or something like that. So I think that would be something for the Kenny or the local pension board to, to look into for us, because they would have the connections. I wouldn't have.
I mean, perf, obviously perf, Kenny could look into that, or he could reach out to his contact there to let us know. As far as the training board. As far as the training board, obviously, Division of Professional Standards would handle that.
Take care of that question?
Yeah, okay. And it'd be nice to get to the point that we'd have a hiring list, but we can't get there yet, we don't have a full complement.
And I and I don't know if if, we'd have to discuss with Chuck if some language could be added as far as lateral transfers being moved automatically to the top of the list or or away.
Yeah, I don't know.
Because say, say we get into a situation where where we have just, so we have, say, five openings after these next hires. So with those five openings, we decide in in September, we're going to do a a testing, an applicant testing, okay? And so we do the applicant testing and we have a group of, say, 10 people who move forward for those five positions. But then a month, a week later, somebody from another agency who's considered a lateral transfer applies. Do do we just tell them, well, you gotta wait until we do our next hiring? Or where do we put them at, you know? We're not gonna consider you until our next hire group because we already have a hire group for these five positions? Or do we just move that person immediately in to that hiring?
That's a question, and I mean, it's, I think, horizontal to make your candidacy, if we have 10 guys that barely pass the, barely pass the.
Well, we have, but we have to rank them anyways and that's how, because our our rule will say we have to rank those officers after our interview. So after they do their testing and their interview, then we have to give them a rank and notify them their rank of your, your, there's 10 people being considered your number seven of 10, so we have to do that. My question is, is that obviously, we don't want to put somebody off who wants to come here from another agency and who would be a good fit because we're not gonna do another hiring class for another, you know, six months.
Right.
Or potentially, then if we were up to a full complement and the five people got hired and we're at 84 and then that, you know, that person's gonna wait a year or two.
Well, I mean, unless we get approval from the city to say, hey, we have these many retirements coming up, can we hire them now to?
Right.
But I mean, that's we'll cross that bridge one cup.
Yeah, we just, but we do need some language in there to address that.
Yeah, it's like, so if you have a process, are you gonna keep lateral, lateral, the lateral process always open? So if it comes, if it comes about, you can throw somebody in as a lateral into the process without doing the process?
Right.
That would be some language that you guys would have to look at putting into the.
Maybe worded where lateral, an applicant is considered a lateral transfer would be given first consideration over applicants without previous law enforcement experience.
And what if we had two different, you know, two different pools, we have the the traditional new hire, and we have the lateral? We can rank laterals, we can rank, you know, traditional.
Right.
And then it would be up to you guys to then say, hey, you know, this lateral.
But there still has to be, there still has to be some kind of language in there because say, say, uh, say we have five openings and we have 10 applicants who move forward all the way through that process, their ranking says the people one through five are gonna be the five that fill those five positions and and six through 10 are gonna be on a hiring list. Right, so we had to come up with something as far as where 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 a
A lateral.
Lateral transfer would outrank anybody on that list, obviously. We just, we could just change the language and say lateral transfers will be considered the 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 top applicant in 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 the ranking.
Will be given first priority.
Or given first priority or something like that, we have to do that. Just because I don't want to lose somebody like that who would be manpower in three months compared to somebody who's not manpower for 16 months, you know.
Right, they're a red long for the first year.
Right, right. And and yeah, it's nice to have all those officers, but to be honest with you, I know and you know that when you get to a position where the complement of officers is so low and then we do big hiring groups, you know where those guys end up, they end up on the desk, you know, because putting them on the desk allows you to take a seasoned officer who would normally be sitting up there and putting them out on the street on their own, you know, and making that manpower. And that's what you guys have to do when you're talking about covering for vacations and sickness or whatever else, you know.
We've been lucky enough to stay away from that in the.
And that and that's been one of our main goals because obviously, we don't want to get to a situation where you have somebody who's been on probation for a year who's not spent more than a handful of times in a car, you know.
I remember my my last couple of months on FTO or on the RSC.
Right, and 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 while you learn things there, you you.
That's not saying.
It's it's not, because you don't spend as much time on the desk as you do on the street when you're out on your own.
Right, right.
So, yeah, you learn the desk job really well, but that doesn't prepare you much for what you encounter otherwise. So, yeah, again, I think that that if if you guys would just go through the rules and regulations for the commission regarding the hiring process, see if there's anything that you guys would like to add. You don't have to wait a week or a month or before our next meeting or at our next meeting. You can just send it to us right away if you come up with something. That way, we can at least present it to Chuck, who's in the process of trying to help us rewrite all this stuff. Because at some point before the next meeting on the 10th, next regular meeting on the 10th, we would like to meet with Chuck to present everything to him so he can at least have a little bit of time at the next meeting to tell us in his opinion how things should be worded, because we want to avoid we discussed earlier, Chuck is is trying to investigate whether or not any of this needs to be presented to the city as an ordinance or just a rule change. So we'd like to get away from having to present it as an ordinance because obviously, that's a lot of work for him to write an ordinance and we still have to go through all the readings and with the city council and we'd like to avoid that by just making it simple rule changes. But again, we'd like your help and with suggestions because as we sit here and talk, we're, we come up with more things than we did together. So I don't know, you guys want to do a special meeting before the next meeting on the 10th to hash this out? Or do you think we should just do it at the regular meeting?
Yeah, we could try it in a special meeting.
Try it in a special meeting.
Okay, so we'll just do a special meeting, another special meeting on the 10th before the regular meeting, so at the same time, 10 o'clock? I think that'd be good, hopefully they'll be here and we can make sure Chuck is here and and because we'd like to all get it done by the September meeting, I would like to have it done by the September meeting.
Be nice to have it in place before we have the next testing, so everybody knows where we're going.
Right.
You got an idea when the next test is gonna be?
Probably, yeah, let's be realistic, September. Like to do it in August, but realistically, with vacations and everything.
Yeah, because we have to have to do it sometime middle of September into September, then we can start, know how to advertise for it.
Right, right.
And, you know.
Right. Right, and and what the advertisement for as far as, again, trying to recruit some.
Because I know, I mean, I know there's officers that want to come here.
Right, right.
I've had inquiries, you know, whether.
Well, it just, it just opens up a whole, a whole new world because you know officers who are interested in coming here and like you said, it's it could be an expedited process and and we'd like to make the transition from one agency to here as smooth as possible for them, obviously. And and as quick as possible.
Would you guys be opposed to advertising for laterals?
So we discussed that and that's one of the things like I, we said earlier, or I mentioned earlier that once all this wordages, all this verbiage is done and in place and is a rule, then exploring the possibility of like, kind of promoting this agency and specifically promoting it to lateral transfers. I know there's a lot of officers who work in smaller towns who aren't as, they they want to be more active than they are and I know there there's an urge to move places.
Have a chance for, you know, advancement.
Right, oh, yeah, exactly.
In a small town of, you know, four officers, your chance for advancement is very small.
Right. So, yeah, that's that's our priority right now is getting this lateral, other than our candidates for the the next eight to be hired, this is our our primary goal right now.
Sounds good.
All right. Well, I guess we take a 10-minute break and I'll adjourn the meeting and we'll have a regular meeting here in about 10 minutes.